Good evening. Welcome to the March 25th, 2024 Meeting of the Storita City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
.................................................................................
All right, first up tonight, we have a presentation on the Chris Salmon Plaza OSU Art Project, and I think Barb Bliss is here and is going to introduce that for us. Hi Barb.
Good evening, Mayor Joyce, council members. I'm Barbara Bliss, the Parks and Community Resources Director. I've not been here for a while, so it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you. This evening, we have guests joining us for a special presentation, Prairie Arts Director, Megan Brazel, and OSU art professors and students. And they're here to share with us two designs tonight for the mural installation at Chris Salmon Plaza, Ninth and Main. If you remember, last year's theme was to honor our first female mayor, Chris Salmon. This year's theme is Vision Forward. So in the next few weeks, we'll have an event to reveal and celebrate the new mural, but tonight, we have the two finalists here to introduce their concepts. And at this time, if Megan would join me, and she can introduce our professor and our two student finalists.
Thank you Barb. And then when you're ready. When we're ready, okay. Thank you guys, thank you for this opportunity again to get to participate in creating this mural for our Stillwater community. I'm very grateful to our professors who have given up time in their classroom and given this opportunity to their students. We have Catherine Combs and Marika Christofisler, who will be introducing and talking a little bit about this project and in their classroom as well. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, so Catherine and I both teach a class called Visual Thinking, which is a freshman level class where students learn how to create compositions and develop concepts. So, we did this project last year, or sorry, last semester as well, and we kind of introduced it through a process of like ideation, developing the composition through several stages, and we chose two finalists to present to you today.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone for us?
Sure.
Or slide it towards you, either way?
Yeah, sure. Do you want me to say?
Either one.
Okay.
So our folks at home can hear you.
Yeah, gotcha. So Catherine and I both teach a class called Visual Thinking, which is a freshman level art and design class where students learn how to develop compositions and create concepts. So, we did this project last semester, and we kind of take them through a process of ideation and creating different compositions, kind of narrow it down, and then choose two finalists, one from each of the two sections that we teach.
Yeah. I don't know how to get it. You click on the little enter down by the minus. Next one?
Next one, right there.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this first design is called Flying to the Future, and we have C.C. James here, who is a freshman graphic design major from Tulsa.
So, my design, Flying to the Future, focuses on the sounds of Stillwater. I was inspired by the Block 34 project that's like being done. In the smaller panel of the mural, there's two instruments, a banjo and a rock guitar. Those are, those represent the like most prominent types of genres of music in Stillwater. And then in the second panel, there, it's a street of Stillwater and like buildings, and a bird is flying over it. The street, sorry, represents, the streets of Stillwater and the building represents the communities, and the curves and like odd shapes is to make it look like it's moving and the buildings are dancing with the music of Stillwater. And the bird represents the Oklahoma State Bird, and it's singing as it flies over the, and looks down at the city. And then the flower shapes, those represent the Bradford, like the state, the city tree and its flowers, and then, sorry, and then the colors represent the city flag.
Cool.
That's great. Thank you.
I'm just going to move on to the next site, so you can see that version of C.C.'s design, just flat there. The, the other student this evening was not able to attend, her name is Emily Clayton. She did record a version of her presentation, which I have on my phone. I can either hold that up to the microphone, or I can give you the Cliff Notes version, whichever you prefer.
Let's hear it.
Okay, just a moment.
My name is Emily Clayton. I am a freshman studying studio art at OSU. The design I am very excited to discuss is titled Green Lady. The name holds little symbols in itself. The design was influenced by a few different symbols. Starting with the prompt, Vision for the Future, I decided I'd follow two predominant themes, cycles or new beginnings, and potential, potential for change. The symbol of the earth itself represents the bigger picture of the future. The planet also serves a compositional purpose, filling more of the negative space in the first panel. The woman herself represents Mother Nature, and Nature in a broader sense. This is the reason she's green. I wanted to tie her into the motif of the earth. I also positioned her to face to look toward the right. This was inspired by something I noticed in movies and other media. Time gaps usually occurred with transitions that started from the left and panned towards the right. I found that this felt natural, like reading, so I incorporated it to guide the viewer through the whole image from the left to the right. To tie into the vision aspect of the prompt, I decided I would project the vision of the future from the woman's eyes. Inside of this projection lie four more symbols. Firstly, the sunset was used to tie into my theme of cycles. I will add that the sunset is not necessarily a sunset, though viewing it as a sunrise would not change the intent. The red and orange also provided a nice contrast against the dark purple background. The hands represent the community working in tandem in order to secure the symbol of the sun. The sun is also another notable symbol, representing the theme of potential, potential for the future. Finally, to tie it all into Stillwater, I featured a lake. The lake was heavily inspired by Boomer Lake, as well as Lake McMurty and Lake Carl Blackwell, all of which are great highlights of Stillwater.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Was the, the two-panel setup here part of your, did you all set up the two-panel format? Or was that? Okay.
So the, the site existing has a couple of open brick areas that are pretty close together, and this mock-up is a view of that, and we decided that it would be fun to kind of have those two elements next to each other, since one would be a little bit small on its own.
So is this in addition to the existing mural?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah.
Good, those are great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So how will the winner be determined?
I'm afraid we have to choose.
It's all you Kevin.
You don't have to, you don't have to choose tonight, but you will be sending us some feedback. And yes, this is something that, so there's two panels, these two panels that they're doing, and then next year, we will do another of the two panels too as well. So it's an ongoing project.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. Such a cool project. We thank, thank you guys so much for, for taking part in this, and, and you know, I noticed we had a lot of people in town last weekend for the Mid-South Bicycle Race, and I, just flipping through Instagram posts, saw a lot of people who stopped and took their picture by the existing mural there, and, and it's something that, that draws the eye and, and people remember from their visit to Stillwater. So, these, either one of these designs would be a great addition to that.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation in recognition of D-Mile Month. I think we have a representative here. Clark, I think, is it Clark?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, I will go ahead and read the proclamation, and then if you'd like to say a few words about D-Mile, we'd love to hear about it. Whereas, the Order of the D-Mile, the Order of D-Mile is a youth organization dedicated to teaching young men to be better persons and leaders. And whereas, leadership skills, civic awareness, responsibility, and character development are learned through a variety of self-directed, real-world applications and activities, building confidence, teaching responsibility, cooperation, and community service, and fostering trust, respect, fellowship, patriotism, reverence, and sharing. And whereas, the Stillwater Chapter of D-Mile has served the community since 1921, and whereas in March 2024, residents of Stillwater will join the members of D-Mile in celebrating the 105th anniversary of the Order of D-Mile. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim March as D-Mile Month in the city of Stillwater.
All right.
Please, tell us, yeah, tell us about your experience.
Yes, wonderful. I'm going to keep things relatively short, so we can keep things rolling. My name is Clark Renaud. I function as the Master Counselor. That is my official title. That basically means, for Stillwater Chapter, I'm the elected president and spokesperson for a term for me that began in November, and it will continue through about late May. So during that time, I work with a council, kind of like this one, of multiple other young men, and my term specifically has really encouraged broadening that from a base of four to six young men to closer to 12 active members with varying responsibilities and assignments, which has really aided us in the last few months in ramping up what we can do around the community and bringing back the passion that many of our members hold for D-Mile. Stillwater is a very old branch of D-Mile. We were one of the first ever founded, so there is a lot of pride in our work, and that's for good reason. So we are a group of young men, 12 to 21, united in the purpose of becoming better brothers, sons, and friends. Our roster of members includes examples of community involvement in band, choir, orchestra, theater, track, swim, wrestling, Boy Scouts, Stuko, SMAC, and multiple other things. We know that it is not the suit and tie that makes a young man responsible and proud, but instead, their reverence for community, their respect for their predecessors, those things, those soft skills that go together are really what we work to develop. We endorse and spread those lessons that lay that foundation for good character, and we would like to thank you for being examples in our community that we can look to as to what that looks like, how that action can actually be carried out. So, thank you for your time. Yes?
Thank you. Thank you.
I will say first off, that item, the staff has requested that item E and item G from the consent docket be postponed to a later meeting, so we will pull item E and item G from the consent docket. Are there further questions, comments, or items you'd like to discuss? Is there action on the consent?
Motion to approve the consent docket, minus items E and G.
Second. A motion and a second to approve consent, minus items E and G. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that is approved. That takes us to item seven, public hearings. 7A, receive public comment regarding request to close a 10-foot wide tract of right-of-way on East 11th Avenue adjacent to property address as 1101 South Main Street, containing 1,400 square feet. CC-24-27, do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Porter.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jaclyn Porter, City Planner, presenting tonight a request by Progressive Development Corp., LLC, for a partial closure of the right-of-way along East 11th Avenue, adjacent to the property address as 1101 South Main Street. The subject area is located near the southeast corner of the intersection of South Main Street and East 11th Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, or the subject area, with the property address as 1101 South Main Street. This used to be where Book Nook used to be, and then across the street, you have several businesses, including Red Earth Yoga and Stilly Nutrition Fix are a few of the ones that are across the street. Here's a street view, looking east off of South Main, towards the subject property. So, a little bit about what they're suggesting, or proposing. The Progressive Development Corp., LLC, is requesting for 100, or 1,400 square feet of right-of-way adjacent to the property address as 1101 South Main Street. The portion of right-of-way is a length of the property, 140 feet, and then 10 feet in depth. This would alleviate the two-and-a-half-foot encroachment of the building into our right-of-way, and that's all. Corey is here? If you have any questions, any questions for staff?
Thank you, Jaclyn. Any questions for staff? I mean, I assume there's no objection or no issue with the right-of-way from our standpoint?
Staff has not received any.
All right, well, at this time, I will open the public hearing. We do have Mr. Stephen Ghost here, signed up to speak on the item.
Good evening, Stephen Ghost, Ghost and Associates, 113 East Eighth Avenue. We're here on behalf of Corey, asking for this closure. Jackie covered everything. There is a two-and-a-half-foot building encroachment into the right-of-way. It's been there longer than I've probably been alive, and so, just trying to get that cleaned up to allow Corey to redevelop the building, plus some potential stuff on the east side of the lot. So, if there's any questions, I'll see what I can do.
Thanks, Stephen. Councilors, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on the item? Is anybody here to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Jaclyn, is there a recommendation for us?
Yes, there is. Staff recommends a motion to close a portion of right-of-way as requested.
Thank you. Councilors?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that closure of the right-of-way is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, item eight, general orders. 8A is the award of a unit price contract for the alternate bid to Ellsworth Construction, OKC LLC, for $2.8 million for road construction. Mr. Small.
My name is Travis Small with the Engineering Department. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Looking forward to getting this project underway, a long-awaited project. The project is located south and west of Airport Road and Perkins Road intersection. It's highlighted here in red, as you can see. It includes Airport Road from essentially the railroad to Perkins Road, Hornet Avenue from Park Drive to Perkins Road, and Park Drive from Hornet Avenue to Airport Road. The existing project, you can see here on the left, the picture on the left, this is a current condition of Park Drive, and it's relatively indicative of the existing pavement condition that you see out, out there. Currently, the, the PCI, or the Pavement Condition Index ratings for these three roads are listed here, Airport being 19, Park being 33, and Hornet being 35. Those are all based upon a 100-point scale, so as you can see, that's on, fairly low on the scale. On the right, you can see this, this graphic that shows red and, and a darker red for the three roads in, in question. The red and dark red indicate that these roads really are in need of rehabilitation or reconstruction. Some background to the project. First of all, I'd like to show that, that this picture here is looking on Airport Road to the west. You can see that basically the entire north half of the roadway is involved. It started out with a lot less when this initially began occurring, and has slowly started migrating towards the center line of the roadway. But some background to the project, originally, the FY20 pavement management program was approved, and it included three different full reconstruction projects, one of them being Park and Hornet. As, as a side note, dur, in that FY20 program, $1.6 million was allotted to pay for construction of all three projects. Currently, we've had one project that has been funded and is under construction right now, the Seventh Avenue project, and it's 1.2 million. So we have just slightly under $400,000 left for both Airport, Park, Hornet, which is here tonight, and another project, the third project, Monticello, which will be soon be going to bid. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. During the design of the project for Park and Hornet, which was approved in the FY20 program, Airport Road began to deteriorate significantly, and at that time, it was decided to go ahead and include that in the Park and Hornet project. So the proposed solution for the project included a base bid and an alternate bid. The base bid included full reconstruction for Park and, Park and Hornet in both the base and the alternate. The alternate included Airport Road, and the base included full reconstruction in concrete for the north half, and milling overlay of the asphalt on the south half. The alternate bid included full reconstruction, the full width of Parkin, or excuse me, Airport Road from the railroad to Perkins. One of the things I'd like to bring to your attention is staff believes that the, the better altern, or the better solution to the project would be the alternate. And there's several reasons for that, and if you guys would like, I can go into that. Bids were, bids, it went out for bid in February, we opened in March 6th. You can see the, the list of bids here, along with the engineer's estimate. Staff has reviewed the bids and recommends the, the award of the alternate bid to Ellsworth Construction for the alternate bid of $2,814,763.15. Staff did advise T-PAC of this particular project. We let them know that because of the timing, probably would not have it back before T-PAC to have them approve it before we got to council, but they all seemed very willing to, to let us bring it to council for award. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Councilors, any questions?
Was the Seventh Avenue project one of the three that was, that was in the budget for that year, going back to, I guess, FY20?
Yes, counselor.
Okay. Okay, and so we basically just used most of the money budgeted for all three on one project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
So, given that we authorized 1.6 out of the fiscal year 20 pavement management project, where is all of this extra money for these other two projects coming from?
Currently, we do have 260 fund availability that can cover that extra money that's necessary. So we can do a budget amendment, which is included in this, in this particular action by council. So we do have that funding available, and next week, I hope to be up here in front of you presenting what we plan to do with the additional 260 funding that's available and for fiscal year FY25.
On the pavement management program?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what is the 260 fund? Is that transportation sales tax?
Transportation sales tax, yes, sir.
So at this point, we'll just be taking extra money out of transportation sales tax, and then we'll, we'll allocate what we've got left over to pavement management in the future?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I assume the, going from 1.6 for these three projects to what will amount to, I'm assuming closer to five or six million for these three projects is due to increases in construction costs, or how are we so far off?
There's several factors. One, yes, you're correct. The construction costs have gone up significantly since they were originally estimated. We also, on this particular project, Airport, Park, Hornet, as I mentioned before, the original project was only for Park and Hornet. It did not include Airport, and so that definitely expanded that scope significantly and cost a lot more. You know, and just the fact that it, it's taken a little bit of time, you know, prices have increased over time.
What's our best estimate on Monticello at this point?
I have an estimate right now with contingency for the roadway portion of Monticello for about $2 million.
Wow. Cool.
That's, that, I want to preface that by saying it hasn't bid, so that's an estimate.
Sure. Well, we all know it doesn't cost, it's not cheap to get these roads, keep, keep these roads fixed, so I appreciate the, the update on, on those other projects. Councilors, further questions on this project?
I'll just comment, I heard someone on the radio this morning say that very thing.
Might have been me.
Might have been you.
Further questions about the staff's report? What is your recommendation for us?
Staff would like to recommend a ward of the unit, unit price contract to Ellsworth Construction for $2,814,763.15. Authorize total construction expenditures not to exceed $3,130,000. That includes construction, testing, and contingency. Authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $2,736,916, and I apologize for the typo. And authorize city manager to execute contracts and related documents. And to your point, the $2,736,916 is the additional funding that would come from the sale of transportation sales tax, Fund 260.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Can I still ask a question?
Yeah.
So, there was a, in T-PAC, they discussed Fund 260 and 265. What's 265, and where does that money come from and go to?
I am going to have to defer to my director, and I apologize.
That's all right.
Is it possible that it's 101 and 105? Because there is a 101 and 105, and those are related to general budget, but 260 is the only transportation sales tax, and in history, before, when we only had about four and a half million in it, we would draw money from general, which might be 101 or 105.
Okay.
Is that right? Is that 215? How about 215?
Could be, I'll take your word for it. I don't remember, I don't remember my on-phone number, so.
Okay. We can look into it more, maybe on for some.
Thank you, yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to surprise you with that question.
Oh, it's quite all right.
Councilors, questions, comments, or action on the staff's recommendation?
I move approval of the staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation on the bid. Please vote. Vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Item nine is ordinances. Ordinance on first read, item eight, ordinance 3533, an ordinance closing a portion of a right-of-way located near lots 23 and 24 in Block 57, original town, now city of Stillwater, Payne County, Oklahoma, near property address as 1101 South Main Street. This is from earlier this evening. Questions, comments, or action on the ordinance?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3533 to second read.
Second. A motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is moved to second reading. Reports from the officers and the board. Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Meek?
Please join us this week for community meetings to discuss the new Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility. We have a meeting tomorrow evening in the dining and event hall at the Stillwater Community Center, beginning at 5:30 PM. We will have another meeting Thursday, March 28th, at 5:30 PM, but this one will be online or virtual. Your voice is important to us. Collectively, let's determine what is best for our residents and animals. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/animalwelfare. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/animalwelfare.
Looking forward to hearing that feedback. Vice Mayor?
The annual Trash Off Event to help keep Stillwater beautiful will be Saturday, March 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Volunteers will meet at the Couch Park Pavilion at 1270 East Alcott Drive. Since work gloves, safety vests, and trash bags will be provided, volunteers are asked to RSVP by March 28th by calling 405-533-8482. This is an opportunity to earn community service hours if needed. So, all you high school folks that are looking for National Honor Society Beta Club points, that'd be a good one. Additional information is available online at stillwaterok.gov/troshoff.
Also a good event if you've got a work group at your office or something like that. I know folks from my office do it together on a yearly basis, so get whoever you can find together and send them out to help with the trash off. There's a competition and a trophy.
That doesn't get you excited, so get your work gloves on.
Go get a trophy. Counselor Hawkins?
We want your feedback for Stillwater's new comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan establishes a vision for the next 10 to 20 years of a city's growth, and it guides decision-making for policy and public investment. Please take the survey and share your input. It is available in hard copy form at the Stillwater Public Library and online app, I can't believe you put this whole link in, Or, we also have a link off our website at stillwaterok.gov.
I was hoping that was in there.
Somebody needs a tiny URL, I think.
The comprehensive plan page on our website has a ton of that information and links to all those other sites as well, so, yeah. Please go and provide your input there. Counselor Clark?
Celebrate the 2024 eclipse with the Stillwater Public Library. The library is hosting two in-person eclipse-related programs in honor of the total solar eclipse that will cross the southeast corner of Oklahoma on April 8th. The first event is for adults on Thursday, March 28th at 7:30 p.m., and one for kids and teens will be on Friday, March 29th at 1:00 p.m., because it's Good Friday and there's no school. Discover, learn, and get free eclipse glasses. For more information about these events, go to stillwaterok.gov/libraryeclipse.
That's really cool that they're doing that and giving away eclipse glasses, because they're actually kind of hard to find, and you don't want to look at the sun directly, in case you didn't know. Counselor Harden?
Did you know that the Stillwater Fire Department has staff members who are certified child passenger safety technicians? Our fire department staff are ready to help with car seat installations or checkups. To schedule, please call fire station number one at 405-372-0497. Thank you for not giving me an URL to do it.
All right. Well, I have probably the downer announcement. Thanks for saving this one for me. But unfortunately, due to extensive repairs that are necessary for safety and possible operation at the Stillwater Pool located in Couch Park, this year, we're going to utilize the YMCA to meet our community's pool needs for the summer. We really, really appreciate the YMCA partnering with us. You know, our public pool has served well for many years. However, it now requires significant repairs and maintenance essential to ensure safety and functionality. Our top priority is the overall well-being of our poolgoers and their positive summer experience. So, the Stillwater YMCA will be available to community members for $5 a day, Monday through Friday, from one to five, and Saturday from one to four, from June 3rd until August 10th, 2024. For more information about the Stillwater YMCA, go to ymcaokc.org. Again, we appreciate their cooperation and helpfulness, and look forward to hopefully more, better options in the future. Anything further, counselors? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now be adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for March 25th, 2024. Several items on the consent docket. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that consent docket is approved. There is, in fact, nothing else on the agenda for the SUA tonight, unless there are any comments or questions from the board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this time, we'll call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority for March 25th, 2024. Trustees, action on the consent docket?
Move to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Takes us to item 5A. Consider requests submitted by Progressive Development LLC for public infrastructure financing support for public parking associated with the project at 116 West 10th Avenue. Mr. Moore?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and Trustees. Brady Moore, Deputy City Manager. Here tonight to present the request from Progressive Development Corp. LLC for financial assistance for public infrastructure improvements adjacent to the recently approved Empire Slice Project at 116 West 10th Avenue. As you will recall, the Stillwater Investment Plan, the Stillwater Downtown Campus Link Project Plan, has a budget that includes $11,617,500 for public infrastructure facilities and improvements. And to date, $627,979 of this public infrastructure budget funds have been spent on public infrastructure, so about 5% of the overall budget to date. Progressive Development has obtained three quotes for the installation of eight parking, public parking stalls, including 188 accessible and curb along the north side of the Empire Slice Project at 10th Avenue. So, again, this is the public parking area in our public right-of-way. And there is, included in your packet was an attached site plan that shows the highlighted area of the parking, public parking that's under consideration tonight. The low quote submitted of the three quotes was $48,124.72. The TIFF III Implementation Policy Committee met on March 11th, 2024 to consider this request from Progressive Development, and the TIFF Committee approved the recommendation to you, the trustees, tonight for the public infrastructure financing support, and the vote was five to zero. As an additional note, during that discussion with the committee, there was support from them to create additional spots, for staff to look at possibly creating additional spots on the south side of the road, which would kind of complete the full block on 10th for parking between Main and Husband, which would help all the businesses and restaurants in that area. But tonight, again, you're just looking at this highlighted area that's before you, and Corey from Progressive Development is here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Trustees, any questions? So, Brady, just to be clear, these, the developer is required to build parking as part of the development?
Typically, when it, our code does have parking requirements when you develop on private land or in private areas. What's different about in a district like this, in a downtown area, is that you have public right-of-way that is adjacent to these buildings. In fact, our right-of-way lines go right up to some of these old warehouses that Corey's been redeveloping. So, participation from a city in some of the public realm has occurred at Stone Cloud and other TIFF projects. The building height, Corey can correct me, I think it's like four or five feet you've got to get up into this building that Empire Slice is occupying. This building has not been ADA accessible. It now will be. It's a pretty expensive ramp and stairs that he's funding as his side of the project, so he's just asked for assistance on these eight public parking spots.
Yeah, that was the second part of my question. These are, in fact, public parking spots, right? These are not reserved for this business in particular or any other business in the area, but are...
That's right. Good Little Eaters customers, Tokyopot, all those can park here as well.
And I assume they'll go into one of our timed parking categories at this point? Are they 90-minute spots? Do we know what they'll be?
The other spots, it'll be, we always try to, you know, work with the local vendors in those areas and see what's best for them. But also, what's adjacent, we'll look at what's adjacent in front of. But yes, we will make that consistent.
So, just for fun, just to the east of here, in front of Good Little Eater and Tokyopot, it's like gravel. And I assume that's public right-of-way right there.
Yes.
I don't know, have we looked at as part of these projects, potentially improving those parking spots?
Yes, 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 yes. Good question. Yeah, we have looked all the way from Lewis to Husband. The road condition is not, it's less than ideal. Again, we have more important projects that you're going to see next week that are in front of that project. And so, right now, this is a way to create public parking spots, but as we redesign that corridor from Husband to Lewis, we would like to redesign the parking right there in front of Tokyopot and Good Little Eater.
It'd be great if we could just mark them at some point now, because now if you go and pull in front of there, like, you can't really, there's no lines, and so I think there's not as many spots get used because people don't actually park in a spot, and so...
Yeah, I'll make a note. That's something we can look at doing.
At least, yeah, we could at least stripe them so that people can sort of see where they're supposed to park and not take up more room than they should.
Yeah, we can also have the headers there that make sure, kind of identifies the parking stalls. That's a great idea. Okay?
Yeah, because there's going to be a lot of people down here.
Yeah, it's exciting to see that area.
All right. Trustees, other questions?
So, we're being asked to fund the entire $48,000 of this project.
Through the infrastructure funds that are in the TIFF, and that is, yeah, that is what the TIFF Committee kind of oversees, and they supported that, and wanted that recommendation brought to you.
Because it's city-owned street parking.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's, yeah, as I mentioned, the right-of-way in this area, which is our public-owned, city-owned area of the town, the right-of-way is a term you hear a lot, that area, those lines, when you look on our GIS maps, go right up to those buildings. So, it's all our public area, and this is our way to participate in creating that public parking.
So, to be clear, because I had a few questions for planning on this as well. So, development in this particular district does, certain things can trigger the developer required to make public realm improvements. This development, because of the square footage and other triggers, I can't remember, it was either five to seven spots are required to be installed by the developer, but because the location is in the TIFF, he can request for that financing support through the TIFF funds available, the public infrastructure financing. So, does that clarify a little bit more?
But the developer could not have installed parking in the right-of-way. Is that correct?
Because of his development in this area, he was required to install that off-street parking. And so, in connection with that, he is requesting for assistance because the development of those spots supports the project objectives of the TIFF III.
Yeah, he couldn't have built private parking in our right-of-way. Yeah. And that's, I mean, that's honestly one of the, one of the main purposes of the TIFF in the first place, is to allow the city to assist with some of those public realm improvements so that these developments become viable, and that we, you know, we would not have nice parking spots here if we weren't having a development right next door, so. Further comments, questions, or Brady, are we ready for a recommendation?
I've got a motion if you need it.
Let's hear it.
All right. Motion to accept the recommendation of the TIFF Number Three Implementation Policy Committee to approve the request for public infrastructure financing support for public parking associated with the project located at 116 West 10th Avenue.
Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendations?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that recommendation is approved. Thank you, Brady. I saw in the newspaper that May something is our opening date for our pizza there? Is that the plan still? So, for graduation? Okay. All right. That takes us to item seven. Reports from the officers and board. Ms. Carnley?
Request for an executive session as authorized under 25OS Section 307(c)(11) for purposes of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or to locate within our jurisdiction if public disclosure of the matter discussed would interfere with the development of products or services, or public disclosure would violate the confidentiality of the business.
Thank you. Ms. Meek? Nothing from you? Trustees, anything from you all? All right. Do we have a motion to enter executive session for the reasons requested by the city attorney?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority will now be in executive session. And we're back. Is there a motion to reconvene in regular session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene as CETA. Please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jaloski?
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Harden?
Yes.
Was there any recommended action from executive session?
No action.
No action recommended. Is there a motion to adjourn CETA?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jaloski?
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Harden?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for this evening.